This is Lauren Lin, Planning Director. This is the Planning Board meeting for April 15th, 2020, and we are conducting this via Zoom. So right now I can see we have Jen Orem, we have Paul Cleary, Clark Brewer, Eric Potter, Amy Glassmeyer, and we have two representatives for A&R applications that are later on this agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to Clark and we can get this started.
Okay, welcome everyone to the April 15th Planning Board meeting. We'll try and run through this agenda as quick as possible. First up is a hearing for Article P7, the Land Alteration Bylaw. We want to continue this hearing to May 20th, 2020. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to...
That will be at 7 o'clock.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
If I may interrupt, everybody has, every vote has to be a roll call vote.
Okay, Clark says aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Aye.
That was Eric. Paul Cleary, aye.
Oh yeah. I'm still catching up to technology.
Okay. Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing of the...
Clark, I'm just going to pause you for a minute and repeat what you said because it was repeating. This is the continued public hearing.
If everybody turns off their video, we'll have more bandwidth.
Apparently we... Off?
Everybody turn off their picture.
I'm going to repeat what Clark said. It was broken up a bit. This is the continued public hearing for the Village Business District Special Permit and Site Plan Approval for 8 James Lane and 2 Pleasant Street, continued from March 4th, 2020. We're going to be continuing this to May 20th, 2020 at 7:15 PM.
Some moves.
Is there a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Amy says aye.
Clark says aye.
Paul Cleary, aye.
Eric Potter, aye.
All right, great. Next item on the agenda is several approval not required plans. The first one is 264A North Main Street. And as you all know, I'm in a butter, so I'm going to recuse myself and not vote and let Eric run this portion of the meeting. Though if you have any questions for me, I may be able to answer them. Eric, take it away.
Hi, everyone. Just following up on the meeting that we had last time about the A&R and 264A North Main Street. Lauren, help me out here. What's the next steps?
Here, I am going to put up the... Can you all see my screen still?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to... Here's the A&R plan that was before us at the last meeting. The Planning Board requested that we have council opinion. Did everybody see the opinion that I distributed?
I did.
Very good.
Okay. So now with that, would you like me to share a summary of... It's up to you. I mean, I was not at privilege to share the council opinion before this. It is attorney-client privilege, but I'd be happy to run through what Kara said if you would like.
Sure, that works, Lauren. If you could, that'd be helpful to everybody.
Certainly. So as with any A&R, it's an approval not required under subdivision control law. As we all know, it needs to meet minimum zoning requirements. A&R's need to have suitable access with lot frontage, lot width, all of the above. This property in question did have a previous A&R that was... It was approved by a previous planning board some years ago. There was a court case that took place that was... The decision was issued earlier last year that was upheld. The Planning Board right now will need to determine whether this reconfiguration of lot lines for this meets the zoning requirements, whether there is suitable access and width and frontage for the lots at hand and whether Dolan Lane serves a suitable access for these properties. If the Planning Board feels that there is not such, they need to make a determination and explanation as to such. Otherwise, approval would be recommended. But therefore, it's up to the Planning Board to decide whether the access is adequate. And with that, we do, I believe Jeff Hassett, the engineer for the attorney, is on the call. Jeff, are you here?
I am, thank you.
Do you have anything that you'd like to say to the board?
Yeah, for the record, Jeff Hassett here with Morse Engineering, speaking on behalf of the applicant. I'll just give you a quick recap. So this is an A&R plan which was continued from the last hearing. And the plan is to reconfigure three existing lots. The lots were created in 1972. Each of the three lots had frontage on Dolan Lane. And the total land area for the three lots is about 9.3 acres. Currently, one of the lots is developed and the other two are undeveloped. So the plan before you reconfigures the three lots and they will continue to have frontage on Dolan Lane. The land areas will range from 2 to 4.3 acres in size. And you can see that the existing dwelling conforms to all of the building setbacks. So the reason the last hearing was continued was you wanted to get town council's opinion on and look into the adequacy of the way. To give you a little more information on that, the Planning Board determined it to be adequate in 1972 when they endorsed the plan. And the meeting minutes from that hearing, which we submitted, indicated that it was a way of long standing back in 1972. And then, as was just mentioned, a judge agreed with this last year and we've provided a copy of that decision. If you look on the last page, the judge noted that the Cohasset Planning Board determined that Dolan Lane was a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Cohasset that had sufficient width, suitable grade, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting or served by the way. So that was back in 1972. More recently, the way has been further improved. It was paved six years ago. It was paved by the town using state funds. Width ranges from half feet wide. The thickness of the asphalt is five inches. And the way itself that the pavement is within, the way is 20 to 25 feet wide. A couple of things we wanted to note is that the fire department did respond to a fire at 264 Dolan Lane, which is the last house on Dolan Lane, two years ago. And they had no issues putting that fire out or getting to the house. And then they also responded to a medical emergency eight months ago at the property where they also had no issues making it to the house. We also wanted to note that we measured a few other roads in town that were, that have a similar width of pavement where the Planning Board has issued a number of decisions for. Those roads were Gammons Road, Meadow Lane, and Lothrup Lane. So for all of these reasons, we feel that Dolan Lane is adequate frontage and that you can endorse the A&R plan in front of you to reconfigure the lot lines between the three existing lots. So, thank you. We'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much for giving that synopsis. It actually brings something, highlights something that I hadn't thought of before. And I think I'd just like to clarify for the record. The 1972 plan, were those three buildable lots?
The plan does not indicate that they are not, so...
Right, so it doesn't say not a buildable lot on there?
It does not say that. And one of the lots was built on since then, so yes.
Do you speak to the nature of the other lots? Lot A and Lot B?
Yes. Oh, did it speak to it? No.
No. Can you speak to those lots?
Yeah, so those lots... Lot, essentially on the 1972 plan, there was a lot more at the end of Dolan Lane, which we are moving to where Lot C is now, closer to North Main Street. And Lot A remains essentially only a minimal change to the lot lines to Lot A.
So because we don't have a... You're moving that around. Somebody's moving that around.
I'm moving this to the previous configuration.
Okay.
This is the previous configuration.
Okay. And then with that configuration, where's the frontage on that? On those lots?
Where is the frontage?
Yeah.
Can I point to this? So it's on the private way? Yes, yep.
And Lot four, or the Lot A, has access on the private way?
Yep, that portion that's narrower is 50 feet wide. It's a 50-foot wide accessway. 50 feet of frontage.
Guys, can I just, can I chime in for a second? I... It was a little choppy there, so I don't know if everybody's hearing me clearly.
I can hear you.
I think Jeff did bring out, I'll just get cut to the chase here. I don't think that access is adequate. But Jeff does bring, in the issue of fairness, I think Jeff brings up a strong argument that is a reconfiguration of lots, which would mean that to not accept an A&R plan at this time would may... And I don't know, I don't know what my answer would be. It may mean that we are not agreeing with a prior determination with regards to access frontage. If it's a reconfiguration of existing lots, we see those quite often. We're not changing anything that's already been determined here. I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here because I personally was, did take a ride down the lane and I don't think it's a suitable for another couple houses. But I will say that, you know, we do have an A&R plan that's already been approved and we're, if it's a reconfiguration of the lot sizes, that does give an argument towards it being approved.
Eric, would it be helpful if I read the full council opinion?
I think so.
Okay. This is from Special Counsel Kara North from Murphy-Hastie-Tulman Lane. This will be part of the public record. With regard to the A&R request for 264A North Main, in the 2019 Land Court decision, the court determined that the November 1st, 1972 A&R plan was final as it had never been timely challenged and that when the Cohasset Planning Board endorsed the plan in November 1972, it necessarily determined that on November 1st, 1972, Lots A, B, and C on the A&R plan each had at least 50 feet of frontage on a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in Cohasset that had sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting or served by the way and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land in the buildings erected or to be erected thereon. Planning Boards generally do not want to go back and reconsider or question prior decisions of an earlier reconfig, of an earlier configuration of a planning board. Thus, the current board is generally bound by the findings of a Planning Board's November 1st, 1972 endorsement and the court decision, both of which determine that the Planning Board found Dolan Lane sufficient to be able to be utilized for frontage for Lots A, B, and C as of November 1st, 1972. In my opinion, the reconfigurations of Lots A, B, and C results in the same conclusion. And the Planning Board should endorse the plan, particularly since Dolan Lane is currently being used to serve those three lots now. However, if the Planning Board does not agree that as of April 15th, 2020, Dolan Lane has sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutted or served by the way, then it must make specific findings on that point before it could determine not to endorse the A&R. The court decision specifically did not make any findings or conclusions with respect to the compliance of zoning or whether Lot A is buildable. I've attached a copy of, for your records, and attached is a copy of the court case decision referenced.
What's the maximum buildout of this multiple property space?
It would be three house lots.
What's the maximum buildout of those lots? There's nothing specifying whether or not those lots are going to stay as 4.04, 4.52, and 1.0. What is the maximum buildout of that space?
Well, Amy, I think that's the whole point here of the A&R plan. The A&R plan, I think, increases the lot size of one of the lots, which will allow for a bigger house to be built on it. So from a business standpoint, it would make sense for the reconfiguration of lots for the homeowner. I think that's the whole intent here of doing that. Instead of having a one-acre lot, Lot B, you're going to increase that lot size. You're going to be able to build a bigger house than you would have normally. And again, that's not me, and that's just my opinion of why someone would want to do something like this. As opposed to just keeping the A&R as it is, you know?
Okay, so I understand that, but I want to know, given the regulations around these three pieces of property and this property space in general, what is the maximum number of residences that can be built there? Not what is being proposed on the plan now. I want to know what the density increase potential is.
So we haven't, I can answer that. We haven't done any conceptual plans showing a maximum buildout for this property.
I know, but there is a set of rules that regulate the use of this land. So what's the maximum number of units?
Well, you could look at how many lots could you get with 50 feet of frontage, which is your requirement. Each one would need the required land area and the required width. But that's not what we've filed. That's not what we have in front of you right now. The intent is really to just reconfigure the lots, making what is now Lot C a better lot to actually build on, making it two acres and making it a lot that would actually have a decent backyard and some privacy. So I understand your question. It's a calculation, a plan that we haven't done because it's not what we're proposing.
Right, but I'm thinking in terms of, in 1972, this piece of property was designated to have a purpose. Isn't that correct? And what was the original plan for the use of the property in 1972?
Three lots.
All right, so I want to know, and the road was built and the road was placed with the expectation that there would be three properties that could be inhabited, correct?
Yes and no. The road was already built in 1972 and the owner at the time divided this lot into the three lots shown. Why he didn't have more, I don't know.
Okay, the reason I'm asking that is, while I really appreciate the additional detail, I wish we had had it earlier on the actual use of the street and the fact that it's been upgraded. 10, between 10 and 12 feet for multiple units beyond three would be untenable. And I want to know whether or not the possibility exists that this property could have more than just three residences on it. Because I feel like the injury to the owner of the property that Dolan Way goes through would be substantially increased if the rest of the property actually is not going to be a single home or three single homes, but could be as many as nine single homes. And I want to know more about what's going to happen.
Amy, if I could?
Well, can I, I think Amy does raise, it's actually a point I had a thought of and it's a great point, Amy. What's the impact here? What is, can they go from building a 3,500 square foot home on Lot B to a 5,500 square foot home? I think that the impact, or can they put more than one year? I think that is something I thought, but I think it is a good question as to how the density is impacted by the reconfiguration of the lots.
I can answer that. The density is not impacted. The intent is to build single-family homes. So it'll be, it'll be three single-family homes regardless.
I will add that, again, Lauren Lin, I will add that though, though A&R's do not signify zoning compliance, that just under zoning in this district, you cannot build more than one house on one lot anyway. This is zoned for a single-family, one house per lot.
So you're saying that none of the lots that are being asked to be reconfigured could be further subdivided?
I would say that just, and I haven't done the analysis, but looking at the plan, if they were to redivide, they would need to make sure that each, if they were to further divide this property line, they would need to make sure that they were meeting zoning minimum square footage, minimum frontage, minimum lot width.
Okay, that's what I presumed. And I would like to know what the minimum lot size is in this particular area. It's a dense, it's a dense part of the, it's a dense part of the town. So it's not going to be like doing it even where I live, where there are larger lots. So I just want to know what the long-term impact is. And the reason is because having a 10 or a 12-foot road is insufficient to move significant numbers of cars and people.
So I think the Planning Board in 1972 determined and the judge agreed that there is adequate frontage for the three lots. At this point, we're just reconfiguring them. I understand the question about, well, what if down the road they wanted to further divide it? That's not the plan we have in front of you. As far as I know, it's not the intent. If that, down the road, if someone came back and they wanted to put 10 lots in here, I don't see that happening. But the board would have to determine at that point whether the way was adequate for that many more lots. But again, that's just not in front of you right now, right in front of you right now. As far as I know of, the owner is just redoing the lot lines.
And Jeff, you're saying that the existing, if this, if this A&R were not approved, let's just say that for argument's sake. In the 1972 A&R prevailed, they still have three lots with that 1972 A&R plan. Could they put three, could there be a home on each one of those lots as it's currently configured? In the 1970s, there could be. So there's no additional homes that are going on those lots?
Correct, exactly.
Eric, how you doing? You're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that.
So given the increasing population that is likely to locate on this site, who's going to be, or who would be responsible for expanding the road to actually be able to carry two-way traffic safely?
Amy, that's, again, Lauren Lin, Planning Director. One of the problems with, you know, not necessarily a problem, but one of the things about an A&R is that there's no way to condition that you must require, what you're accepting right now if you approve this is that you're approving the condition of the road as is. You can't, there's no way to condition that there's any sort of required upgrade at a later point.
Right, so that means that the town is willing to accept what would be considered non-standard size roads to provide access to residences.
Can I, can I speak for a minute? It's Paul Cleary. Eric, please.
Eric, you're on mute again.
Paul, go ahead.
So I read the attorney's letter earlier when it was sent out and I visited the site. And I agree with some of the comments that have been made so far that it seems inadequate for access. But I also know that if we to deny and not approve this plan, that we're opening up the town to litigation of all kinds because the density hasn't increased. And Jeff presented well in indicating that, which I think is the most important, is fire safety and life safety. And, you know, is inadequate as it looks to the eye. The emergency responders were able to service the site, get to the site, and apparently didn't have an issue with the site. And so the fact that it was approved for three lots in 1972, they're not asking for eight lots or 10 lots now. They've just changed to make the lots a little bit more user-friendly. Still serving the same families. I just don't, I guess, I was surprised that we were even, that this was even coming before us because I thought that the 1972 plan was like done and brought to the court. And the court ruled in the favor of the Planning Board of 1972 and said that it was adequate. So I don't understand.
Paul, if I could just provide some clarification. Any moving of lot lines of this nature does need to come before the Planning Board through this matter anyway. So even though it's just a reconfiguration of a lot line in the sense, that's why it's coming before you as an approval not required plan.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
I would concur with Paul's opinions on everything. I feel like we're kind of... After reading Council's email, it's my opinion that, you know... It's a precedent situation here and it is a reconfigure of lot lines, reconfiguration of lot lines that are previously approved in our plan. But if anybody goes to the site today, they can see that another couple houses can overwhelm the existing site to a certain degree. And so I'm personally conflicted as to which way to go on this one.
Can, can, can we, I would like to ask Clark to explain how the access is described or was described during the discussion before the court?
If I could just, before we head down that path, Clark is recusing from this discussion and I would just caution against Clark providing any statement that might sway the board's opinion.
Could Clark, could Clark, could Clark's give his, as in a butter, is he permitted, even though he's recusing himself as a Planning Board member? Is it okay to, as a butter, as if we'd ask people in the audience if they had anything to say? Is that okay?
This is Jen. In general, when we have people recuse themselves, they generally leave the room in a public meeting, so I don't know. I mean, it's up to all of you.
Understood, yeah, that's understood. I think it's going to be a messy thing, guys. And Amy, I'll defer to you, quite honestly. But it could potentially get messy.
Right, I see that. I guess what I don't really get is, I don't think that the judge said all that much. And so what I'm trying to think through is, how can this outcome be affected in such a way that it doesn't have deleterious effects on existing people living along that roadway? Given that it's between 10 and 12 feet wide, and adding more people will be increasing the probability of two-way traffic, and should this piece of property decide to be used with further than three residences, that will only add to the traffic that goes through a pretty sculpted space on one piece of the property. And I just, I want to understand the consequences of the actions that we are about to take, because the roadbed is so narrow.
If I could just speak to this a bit, again, it's Lauren. Again, just to touch again on some points that have already been discussed, that there is an A and R in place as of 1972, that does approve three house lots for these parcels in question. So the plan before you today is changing lot lines, but it's not proposing more than three house lots. If there were in the future to come before you, something that provided more house lots, then that would be a different scenario to, then, you know, that's, of course, an increase in density. But unless you, as the planning board, feel that this is substantially different than the plan that was approved in 1972, you're going to need to make specific findings in your decision as to why it is not adequate compared to what was approved the last time, based on the sake of precedence.
Is it possible for me to jump in? This is Jeff DeLeese. I represent the applicant. I'm a lawyer.
Hi Jeff.
Hi, how are you? Hi Lauren, hi Eric, and the board, how are you?
Hey Jeff, how are you?
All right, I've been listening to the board, and I didn't want to interrupt, especially with the whole Zoom conversation, but I do have some input on this. First and foremost, Amy, while the planning board can't condition approval of an A and R plan to restrict the number of dwellings, I'm pretty certain that there's nothing to prevent the applicant for writing that type of restriction on a plan. And if it would give the board comfort, I'm happy to represent that we would be happy to write a restriction on the plan, that there would not be more than three single-family dwellings on the total of lots A, B, and C. So I just wanted, number one, to get that out there. There's absolutely zero interest in creating density or units. I think the point is well-made, that the plan as it stands right now allows for three houses on this road, and we're not proposing anything different, we're just changing the lot lines a little to make the lots a little better for that. I was at the hearing, I was actually the lawyer who filed the action in the land court and participated in the arguments, and I can represent to the board that there was really no discussion of the substantive adequacy of the road, or the right-of-way. What was discussed at the court is that there was evidence before the court that indicated that the planning board in 1972 considered that issue and already made a determination. And so therefore, the court was reticent to weigh in to any of the zoning aspects of this property that were not properly before it. On the issue of access, while I, I just want to take an opportunity to respectfully disagree with some of what I've heard today. My understanding is that, is that while the board certainly has discretion to determine whether the road is adequate, that the ultimate issue there is whether vital access is able to be effectuated. And we've already determined, Eric drove down the road today, the fire department has been down there fighting a fire on Lot B already. We were able to get, the fire department has been able to get the water line all the way down to the nearest hydrant for that fire. There have been other emergencies on the road in the last couple of years since the town improved this road, that have not been an impediment whatsoever for emergency vehicles. And while I think, Amy, you used the word a substandard road, the whole reason why the A and R definition that accepts a subdivision is there, is because this road pre-existed the adoption of subdivision control in the town, and it already exists. There's no requirement to bring it up to current subdivision standards. If that were the case, every A and R plan that was brought before your board, you would be requiring people to be bringing roads up to subdivision standards to allow two-way traffic, and that's not something that is done, and that's why we're going through this particular process of the A and R request. So, you know, we have a town having paved the road to its standards, from the standpoint of its ability to accept trucks, in other words, there are no potholes in this road. The town putting drainage structure to allow water to drain from one side to the other, and the town plows the road in the wintertime, all the way up to the top. And so, it's mystifying to me how if we already have a plan that allows three houses, going from that to another plan that also allows just three houses, how the board can even make findings that would indicate that the road is not adequate, because it's the same number of homes that it's servicing. So those are my points I wanted to bring out. And Jeff's email earlier today to Lauren, which I hope was circulated to the board, provided photographs of the current state of the road, and you can see it's, you know,
I mean, I'm going to speak with an attorney hat on as well, and I think that's why everyone comes with a different hat on to the boards of these things. I, speaking to the other board members, I tend to agree with Jeff on this. I think that, you know, we have a nice, that's why I asked Jeff, the other Jeff, about what the purpose this was, and it being a reconfiguration of lots, an existing A and R. You know, I think, and I think what Jeff is saying here, Jeff DeLeese is saying, matches up with what council's saying. If you don't find approval of this A and R plan, you have to have a very specific reason why that you don't. And while, I don't entirely feel comfortable with the fact that there's, that the road is the size that it is, I don't also have anything that up, and we have a fire finding that does allow for three lots there. So Jeff, I do see, with an attorney hat on, I think that, you know, there is some precedent here, and, you know, my concern would be, is if you deny this plan based upon that, based upon the fact that just seeking a reconfiguration of lots, reconfiguration of lots and not additional lots or additional density, you know, you have to have a strong argument as to why you're doing that. Which access could be a reason why, but I don't know if that's, if we have enough to support a reason for that, and you have to look at that very closely.
So, the reason I'm raising the issues that I am, is because we got the information about the use of the road, the upgrading of the road, the town's recognition of the road, we got all that tonight. I didn't get this two days ago, or five days ago, or 10 days ago, so this is all new information for me. And I feel like, it's great to get it, but it is very problematic when you're trying to make a decision about something that relates to proper access. And so if I seem like I'm asking redundant questions, it's because I got the information minutes before I, because I've been running around doing other things, I got it minutes before we had our meeting.
Amy, I fully appreciate that, I respect that. I just want to explain to you why it is you got the information so late. And that's because we received an email refusing to share town council's opinion with us, saying that it was privileged. We received that email this afternoon, only about an hour and a half or two hours before the email went out, which provided the additional data of the road. We didn't expect that we would have to make a formal filing to supplement the administrative records so that we can make a case on an appeal. We figured that we would be able to just simply explain this issue off to you guys, but once we saw that there was some kind of information that was being withheld from us, and it turns out, once we get into the hearing, it's fully disclosed.
Jeff, if I could just pause you for a minute right there, that is something that is normal practice. If we get information, it is attorney-client privilege, it is not something that we typically email out. So as a staff member, I am following town hall protocol, that it's attorney-client privilege, I'm not trying to withdraw information from people. I do need the board's acceptance before I can give information out. And I was responding to an email that I forgot.
That's perfectly fine, but I'm just explaining to you why it is that all of a sudden, we scrambled to get a bunch of information in a written form into you, right? If that's your policy, I haven't, I have no experience with your policy, I've never researched the issue as to whether a privilege truly applies in the circumstance. I don't care. What I saw was an email that indicated to me that there could be some kind of denial coming down the road, and I better supplement the administrative record so I can make an argument before the court, and that's why the information came when it did. Otherwise, it would have just been explained to you, but I wanted it in writing.
Right, so we're all in the pickle together, and that's the way it is. So what I conclude from this conversation is, unless there is some extenuating circumstance that can be proved, to request an answer other than the approval of the A and R, that we need to make it now, or that is it. And it seems that you have provided evidence to show us, in graphic detail, the situation. I will not change my mind about the fact that I believe that it is a problematic access, but at the same time, the fact that the town has paved it and managed it in many ways better than many of the other spaces, and that it, is it the case that it is actually a road that the town owns? It's not a private way?
Town does not own the road, it's not public.
So it's a private way?
Correct.
And why did the town, you can answer this question.
I have no idea.
Yeah, and you're not the person to ask that question.
This is Jen, if I could just add one, two more things. I think that going through public hearings, a lot of time with public hearings, that's the whole purpose, is that information will come last minute, the day, that's why we do this. And I know that this is a weird situation that we're in, but we were asked about the opinion today, and we responded today. So I just think the time right now is all squishing up, and we don't realize. And this particular case, I will tell you too, has been discussed at length, and so it was one I thought that people did know about. We will also be adding the stamp regarding zoning, having to be in zoning, all of the plan will have to conform to zoning, so that will help as well.
I have no further questions. And I appreciate the exhibits, even if they were late, they were very helpful.
I'm sorry to have provided them so late.
No, I mean, you know, how would you know we needed it?
You know, it's an A and R hearing, right? And actually, under the law, that a public hearing is not even required for an A and R plan, and they're required to be endorsed or acted upon within 21 days. So, and that's all for a reason, right? It either shows a subdivision, or it doesn't. Usually, it's very unusual to even have a discussion of the length that we're having for any A and R. So, I appreciate it, and I apologize, it came in late, it was a matter of circumstance, really. And Eric, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
I am talking now, sorry about that. I was on mute again. How would you, how do you think, maybe Paul and Amy, how do you think, do you feel comfortable voting on this tonight? Or do you think this is something you'd like some more information on? Maybe I could ask Paul first, and then go to Amy?
Hello Eric, thank you. I mean, I kind of expressed my opinion previously, in that I don't see anything has changed, so I would support an A and R plan that was approved, and if it was approved, the change in the reconfiguration of the lots, still three lots as it is, I would, you know, I would lay in favor of approving it.
So, I think, Amy? Just to give you that, you know, save floor time, so what would your position be?
I don't think there's any more information that I need. A lot of things have happened that have us go in the direction of approving this.
That's correct, all right. Okay, so is the board ready to take a vote on whether to approve the motion, the A and R plan in front of us?
I'd second that.
Okay, and Lauren, just very quickly, a motion to approve be conditioned upon compliance with all zoning, is that, did I hear that somewhere along the way? Forgive me if I.
No, we have a stamp on the plan that signifies that planning board endorsement does not signify zoning compliance.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, and I have, so I have a motion to approve the A and R plan with a second by Paul?
Correct.
All in favor?
Paul Cleary, aye.
Eric Potter, aye.
Do we have a third?
Amy, are you still with us?
Yeah, I said I approved.
Oh, okay. Could you also all take a vote to allow one member to sign, if you could elect the vice chairman to sign on behalf of the board, given that we're not supposed to have everybody together right now?
I make a motion to accept vice chair that they can sign on behalf of the rest of the members of the voting board here this evening. It's Paul Cleary.
All in favor?
Aye, Paul Cleary.
Aye, Amy Glassmeyer.
We might have lost Eric.
I feel like we lost Eric.
Okay, now that the vote has been concluded, we can pick up on 15 North Main Street. That's an A and R plan, has everyone seen the plan? Is there somebody, Lauren, who's going to present this? Are you going to bring it up on the screen? Are you going to bring it up on the screen?
I will bring it up on the screen. We have the applicant on the line prepared to speak to us. James and Kristen, are you online?
Yes, we are.
Thank you for your patience.
So if you could briefly tell us what you're trying to do here, what the actual goal is? My understanding is you're moving an internal lot line to coincide with a party wall that separates two dwelling units.
Correct. So it's a single structure. It was subdivided in the 1800s so that they split the house right down the middle. The lot line.
So it's been a two-family for over 100 years, and it predates zoning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. And what we did was, you know, we rebuilt the house in its entirety, keeping the footprint the same. The front door is the same, the main house is the same. But where the actual lot line is that separates 13 and 15 isn't exactly on that demising wall. It actually splits the front door in half, which belongs to 13, not 15. So our request is to basically move the lot line so that it is exactly on the demising wall. So, you know, it's separated, you know, legally along that, you know, fire and sound rated wall that separates the two properties.
Okay, so both units don't use the front door that's closest to the street, right?
Correct. So it's 100% separated water sewer. The wall goes from the foundation right up to the roof. There is no access at all from one to the other. Like, it's like a row house in Boston, like along Beacon Hill, where they share a wall, but they're two separate, single-family dwellings.
And I can just barely see the former lot line. It looks like it's just below the one that you're showing by about two feet.
Correct. So it, previously, it was almost exactly through the center of the front door. And now it is about 14 inches from the edge of the door. So it's moving over, you know, a couple feet. You know, two and a half feet roughly.
Are there any other questions on this plan?
Paul, it's Paul Cleary, if I may.
Go ahead, Paul.
Hi, good evening, Kristen and James. Thanks for joining us in these crazy times. I thought I read something in your package that was submitted to the town that said there was maybe going to be some letter that was provided with, between you and the potential new owner that wants to close shortly, in short time? Was that submitted? I just, I just didn't see it.
We weren't going to submit a letter. We have an accepted offer. And the closing date that actually was in our purchase and sale is the 17th. And that has been pushed to the 29th because basically we were waiting on this approval. But we weren't going to submit a letter. This was just something that, you know, was outlined in our purchase and sale that we would, you know, move prior to closing.
Oh, perfect. That's all? I just wanted to just make sure that it was referenced either in the purchase and sale or someplace otherwise. So it didn't change any kind of like, I know it's a very small amount of space, but it just didn't change the living area from one side to the other?
Oh, absolutely not. So that the lot line is actually moving so that it's right along that demising wall. So the living space is, you know, as it stands now, you know, we would have to record like an exclusive use easement, you know, for one or the other. Because technically, two feet of, you know, one property is on the other lot. And it's always been that way. But it's just nobody took the time to correct it.
I understand, and I think it's good what you guys are doing. So everyone is on the same page. That's great. Thank you.
So the frontage of the two lots is going to remain non-conforming. It looks like one gets a little less non-conforming than the other, but they're still non-conforming. Again, the A and R doesn't, wouldn't, the stamp would apply that indicates that this is not an endorsement of the accurate zoning?
Correct.
And all we do is endorse the A and R?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this? Amy, did we lose Eric?
We did lose Eric.
Okay, Amy's still with us?
Yep, and I said that I have no questions.
Okay, all right, great. Then, does someone want to make a motion to endorse?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R request for the site on North Main Street to reconcile the line between the two dwellings.
I'll second that.
All right, thanks, Paul. All in favor? Clark says aye.
Amy says aye.
Paul says aye.
Okay, great. It passes unanimously.
Could you just please take a vote to allow the chairman to sign on behalf of the board for this A and R?
I vote to have the chair of the board sign on behalf of myself and others.
As do I. I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Clark says aye.
Paul said.
Amy says aye.
Thank you, James and Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Last item on the agenda is a discussion and vote on the postponement of town meeting. Lauren, can you get us up to speed on what the latest is for town meeting?
Yeah, I will. As we all may be aware, the annual town meeting scheduled for May 4th has been postponed due to the ongoing public health emergency. We are looking to have the annual town meeting in June 2020. The town manager has requested that we have a discussion to consider tabling items that are not essential for a future special town meeting. That way, we could have sort of a condensed version of the annual town meeting in June. We may either address them in, at a certain special town meeting. It may be in the fall, it may be in the winter. But we wanted to have the planning board's consensus on that. That would be pertaining to Articles P1 through P7, as well as the planning board had previously recommended to the board of selectmen to consider an article that would address reciprocal easements at the Cohasset Harbor Inn site. So I'd like to get your consensus on that. But before I turn this over for your discussion, I would just like to highlight, Article P1 is relative to the amendments to Floodplain and Watershed Protection District. That is a requirement of the FEMA mapping update to remain in the National Flood Insurance Program. I would strongly urge you to vote that that does need to be taken up at the annual town meeting, or we risk removal of the National Flood Insurance Program, which would be a huge, you know, implication for our residents.
It seems like all the articles except for that would, wouldn't be necessarily critical for a short annual town meeting. Is anyone talking?
Are you asking us a question?
We can hear you, Clark, but I think Lauren, frozen.
Okay, the only one, the only one that is critical that would have to be on is this P1 related to the FEMA. Everything else could slide to some later date, given that there's a quarantine and zoning issues relative to maintaining town budgets and proper functioning of town is, I'm going to say, less relevant. Any thoughts on that, Paul or Amy?
I'm sorry, Jen. Could I just also elaborate a little bit more on the reciprocal easement discussion? Just for your consideration, we are, I've been in contact with the applicant for the project. It's located at 124 Elm Street. We are anticipating receipt of a special permit application for that property within the next week or so. And we would be planning to open that public hearing process sometime likely about in June. So I just want to bring to the board's attention that there is, as we've discussed in previous meetings, there has been a regular lot line there. There are town utilities located on private property owned by the applicant. And there are some access issues that the applicant would be seeking to get town approval, to have an easement, to allow them to access their lot over town property. So that is the sense of the reciprocal easement discussion. With that in mind, the original planning board recommendation was to proceed with a May town meeting article to address this, to allow reciprocal easement to take place. And we had been working with special councils to draft such language that was put on pause in response to the emergency outbreak situation. So before we resume, you know, a path forward there, we're looking for the planning board's recommendation. I will note that if this, if these articles do get placed on a fall town meeting, it may, it may be that the special permit process is well on its way through, if not over, before we get to that point. So I just want to highlight that the board, if we don't go through this at a town meeting in June, then it may, it may need to be that it's a condition of a special permit. There are other options to pursue this. But I just want the board to be understanding and considering how this proceeds as we're anticipating an application soon.
Well, Lauren, so what you're saying is it's going to be a problem for the applicant as well as the board, because it's hanging out there and needs to be resolved. And we could say. We could say it's a priority for this town meeting, the next one coming up in June. But what is the town manager's take on this?
The town manager is looking for the planning board's opinion on this. If the planning board feels strongly about this, then again, this is one of those irregular circumstances where it's actually not in the planning board's purview to bring forward an article like this. That is, easements are something that is typically done by the selectmen. So this would be a request, but not guaranteed. It is also something that, again, if the planning board does not feel strongly that it needs to take place at this time before the public hearing process begins with this application, that we could look to condition it as part of the special permit. So again, this is entirely up to the board's purview, how you feel that should proceed with this.
Well, I think it makes sense. It's just that even if we get it on the warrant and voted positively to let the selectmen negotiate these easements, they don't necessarily have to negotiate them prior to the special permit site plan review process that the planning board does on this project. They could, they could decide to wait and see how things shake out and then decide to do it after, after our process and vote is complete.
Correct. What you would, your article would be suggesting to allow the board of selectmen to negotiate, to accept and grant easements. It would not be, I mean, there would still be another process that would entail.
Yeah, yeah. But that would be done by them at a later date. It's just that we don't know if that's, I mean, I think it makes sense to try and get this in if we're going to be facing this project. And then, and then get that negotiation underway with the selecting before our special permit site plan review process is over. That would be ideal, right? So is there any reason not to recommend, guys? Amy, Paul?
Clark, the rationale that you used to suggest that we postpone anything that we have a relationship to, other than the most critical business of town, I get that a private developer is, got a risk here, and that this should be resolved. But you set a hierarchy of need. And I feel like, you know, do we, how do we treat the case of the Open Space Committee wanting to have a preservation act enacted about clearcutting and land management? I don't know how to, you know, I don't have a basis to make a determination.
Yeah, well, I mean, the selectmen don't have to take our recommendation regardless. But in terms of a priority of, compared to zoning articles, I, you know, it seems negotiations is going to happen at some point in the future, whether it's before this special permit or not.
I mean, you would admit this is an unusual situation. It's hard to react other than to say, we need to, you know, we need to do something. The question is, what should we do?
Well, I mean, I got to think that the, this hearing process that we're underway with right now is very stressful. It's hard to hear everybody. We can't see everybody. We can't see everything. It's really hard to imagine having a robust public hearing on Zoom for this Cohasset Harbor Inn project. That's, it's a very complex, it's very, it's very hard for me right now to imagine. Okay, but I personally don't have a problem with recommending that it get put on the warrant to allow the selectmen to negotiate, because they don't necessarily have to have a deadline, even if it passes. I just think that probably the applicant would go to Plan B of some sort if it doesn't pass at town meeting.
I think it's going to be complicated for the public to actually hear that issue. It would, I mean, is it the only way that, I guess it is legally the only way for the issue to be resolved, is to bring it before town meeting? But it seems complicated in that, it just seems complicated.
Yeah, Lauren said that this was the only way to negotiate easements, is to get a vote at town meeting. Like, it's similar, but not as stringent as transfer of land. Lauren, can you give any more comments on this?
Right, I'll just add that we've been advised by council on multiple occasions that there is no real simple way to do a land swap between town-owned property and a private interest. So the simplest way to do this would be through a land swap. And I laugh at that because, again, it is a difficult process, and it's not very simple. But this is the best way to address this in the scenario when there are, there's a two-way street here in that there is private interests that would like to use town property as an access to their property. And there are also town interests on private property that we need to be able to access to manage the tide gate in that location.
So it sounds like we basically have to do this.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that you have to. It's up to the planning board to decide if they want to pursue this. Again, whether you vote tonight to make a recommendation.
I mean, I can't hear you, Lauren, but I just.
Can you hear me now? Clark? Did we lose Clark?
No, he's, I think he's just having trouble with his audio.
He just turned off his video.
I just want to answer Amy's question. You don't have to do anything tonight on this. The question is just that if the planning board feels strongly about this and wants to address it in this manner, then you could vote to recommend this to selectmen. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's on the warrant. Again, it's an interesting situation, because it's not in the planning board's purview typically to do this sort of thing. But if the planning board felt that this was an integral part of redevelopment of that property and was important to the special permit, that's a decision that you could make. Alternatively, you could decide at a later date to address this as a condition of the special permit and pursue it that way. So there are options to do this. It's just a matter of how you want to pursue it right now.
Clark, if I may? Paul?
Clark's on mute.
Okay, unmute. Go ahead, Paul.
I hear what Amy's saying, and it's difficult and seems like a bit of a daunting task to handpick or cherry pick a couple of things that we would maybe make a recommendation to go before the Board of Selectmen. But I also feel like this is one that actually involves the town, meaning the public-private piece to it. So I think that it would be okay to present it to the select board and let them make the determination.
Okay, I tend to agree with that approach.
I agree too.
Okay, then why don't we just make a vote to recommend? Can someone make a motion?
I make a motion to refer the issue so described regarding the Elm Street property and issues related to land swaps to the selectmen.
I second that motion. Paul, clear.
Okay, Lauren, does that do the job?
Yes, could you also just, you discussed it earlier, but if you could just take a formal vote on how to proceed with Articles P1 as opposed to P2 through P7?
Okay, well, why don't we finish with the recommendation for the easements?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor? Clark says aye.
Aye. Amy says aye.
Paul clearly says aye.
Okay, and then the other matter was to make sure that the Article P1 regarding the FEMA maps adoption get placed on the warrant as a priority measure. Can someone make a motion or just say so moved?
So moved.
A second?
I second that. Paul clear.
Thanks, Paul. Lauren, is there anything we missed with that?
That, that is all.
Okay, all in favor? Clark says aye.
He says aye.
Paul clearly says aye. Great picture of me, by the way.
It's a great picture of you, by the way.
You look 10 years younger.
You look, you look massive. You look like you've been pumping weight your whole life. Sorry, I'm not supposed to say things like that, but.
Thank you.
I think it's pumping iron.
This virtual, we could be anybody we want. It's my avatar.
So who is it that we see at work or at our meetings? Maybe you're just virtual all the time.
The other guy.
The other guy.
I play it down sometimes. I play it down.
I have a really great picture of myself from about 10 years ago. I use it on everything.
If I could just, before we get carried away, if we could just vote, take a formal vote to be in favor to table the other items for a future special town meeting.
Okay, then, so moved, a second?
I second.
All in favor? Clark says aye.
Amy says aye.
Paul says aye.
Who's that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Before anybody leaves, we have minutes to approve.
Yeah, on the agenda is approving of minutes dated January 8th, January 22nd, and February 5th. Does someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes for the dates as specified by Clark Brewer.
A second?
I'll second that, but I just have one question before I do. I just don't want to be misspeaking, because the January 8th meeting, I wasn't in attendance for it. So am I able to approve those minutes? I just, I just don't know how that works. I apologize.
Don't have to worry about that. Those are actually already approved and on the website. Look at that, brought the cap.
Okay, then I second that motion and I approve, aye.
All in favor? Clark says aye.
Thank you.
Aye. Amy Glassmeyer says aye.
I see on the, at the end, the next meeting planned is for May 20th. Is that still the case, Lauren?
Yes.
Okay. And is there anything else that we need to talk about before we adjourn?
No, I don't believe so. I will also mention that, thank you all for your time and for your patience, this Zoom and webinar. It's a learning curve for a lot of us. And we are going through staff training as we speak to get up to speed on how to best host and manage these meetings. And that moving forward on May 20th, we'll plan to host this in a webinar style that will allow more access to the public than we were able to provide tonight. So we are working to make this e-governing more efficient and effective for everyone. So again, I just want to thank you all for your time and for your patience.
I think you did a great job.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Without any difficulty at all. It was us on the receiving end that had the problem of bandwidth and distractions. So you did a fine job.
Thank you.
Nice to see everybody.
Okay, all in favor to adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second. All in favor? Aye. Clark says aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Stay safe. We'll see you on the 20th.
See you on the 20th. Bye.